Good evening, welcome everyone to the Longdale City Council meeting for Monday, May the 17th, 2021. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call.
Hi, good evening. Mayor Protem Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let's have our ceremonial portion of flags will be conducted by Councilwoman Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand with me and face the closest flag in your area. Men, please remove your hats if you're wearing one and recite along with me. I pledge allegiance to the of the United States
of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Next up, let's hear from our Public Safety Report. Let's hear from Captain Allen Tennyly. Gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present this Public Safety Report for May 3rd through May 16th. I first would like to thank the Longdale community for their diligence in reducing larceny and grand theft vehicle crimes over the past three months. Earlier in the year, larceny thefts were 90% above last year. They have dropped in half as of last week and continue to decline. Also, grand theft vehicles were also over 80% from last year. During the past two months, aisle thefts have declined so much that the city is now negative 26% over the last year. I attribute these declines to the dedication of the community and locking their vehicles and their belongings. I would now like to speak on a couple of interesting arrests. On April 22nd, at the WSS on Hawth- on Hawthorne Boulevard, it was robbed of several shoes. A male and female suspect entered the store and stole several- and stole several shoes. As they're exiting the store, the male produced a stun gun and threatened an employee. They got into a white car and fled. The victim got a picture of the car and its license plate. Detective Torres began working the case last week. The plate was blurry and the make and model given by the victim was inaccurate. Using the license plate reader system, Detective Torres and the crime analyst were able to find a match for the suspect vehicle. An alert set in the system would notify him when the vehicle was read by a fix pole or mobile automatic license plate reader, what we call an ALPR. Later that night, at approximately 8:00 PM, several Torrance's PD's ALPR fixed cameras along Artesia alerted the detective of the vehicle's movements. Detective Torres located the vehicle and afterwards deputies conducted a traffic stop of the vehicle with two suspects. In the vehicle were also boxes of shoes. Further investigation revealed that there may be more WSS robberies committed by the suspects. On May 5th, Long Beach PD arrested the outstanding WSS male suspect who was in possession of the taser. These suspects are tied into a dozen Long Beach cases, a handful of LAPD cases, and two Lamita station cases. Also, on May 12th in the afternoon, Major Crimes Bureau detectives tracked down an Antifa member who was hiding out in our city. He was wanted by the San Diego Police Department for violent crimes including inciting riots and vandalism. Detectives safely arrested him without an incident. He was arrested for assault with deadly weapon warrant and booked at South Los Angeles Station. Last, I'd like to remind everyone that as the 4th of July draws near, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department will be taking a different and proactive approach to its enforcement. With the change in the city's municipal code, deputies will be able to hold more people accountable who use illegal fireworks. So this year, make sure you're using only safe and sane fireworks. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Captain, for that report. Are there any questions about Captain's report? Any comments? Okay, Captain, thank you for that report and thank your deputies for doing a fine job for our community.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is oral communications. Let's hear from the city clerk to see if we have any oral communications that we need to read. Yes, Mayor?
There is one oral communication for an item not on the agenda at this time. And I will read it verbatim from Pam London, Longdale resident. To refresh memories, I would like to remind everyone that I spoke to the city manager at a meeting prior to his start date and again at his first council meeting. On many occasions, I have expressed what a coup it is for Longdale to have such experienced and knowledgeable directors in finance and community development. After the last council meeting, I put in a PRR for the closed session. What I received was an email from the city manager written to department heads the day after. Apparently, the closed session dealt with code enforcement. In his email, the city manager states, "The city council needs to hear directly from me about the details of and the reasons for my operational and administrative choices for our organization." Department heads are told to not take their complaints or concerns to council members. In my experience, when your boss does not listen to what you perceive as a valid complaint, you go above. For the past 12 years, I have heard council insist that they run the city. They are the decision makers. The email alludes to the city manager's belief that he has an understanding of council's values and what he thinks is in the best interest of our community. Do you understand that they run the city? City Council, make certain that you have the backs of those whom have brought so much to this city. There are the people, sorry, these are the people doing the work fixing that which has been abused, neglected, and quite frankly, broken long before I moved to Longdale. Don't let anyone cause such discord that Longdale loses what gifts their knowledge bring to the city. In the past 18 months, I have seen zero changes in the appearance of neighborhoods. Leeds to your knees, trashy in some areas, but we can proudly say we have two homeless hotels on our main boulevard. One may become permanent. Great record. How many beach cities have those? I wish I could have received more info on the closed session, especially as it relates to code enforcement. Everyone knows how I feel about the appearance of this city and the need for a basic standard of care. But clearly, there needs to be a major discussion of who runs the city and how it is to be run. Who can, who can and cannot make changes with or without council's approval? Who can and cannot bring complaints or suggestions to council? You are all here to serve this community. If there are issues, they need to come to the light, not covered in darkness. We all, city residents, businesses, employees, and council, needs to be seen and heard, not ignored. In case of confusion, property values are not based on anything other than location, higher prices in neighboring cities, and low interest rates, not how a city is run. The second communication that we received, it, it's a little bit vague, but I believe it references something on the consent calendar. So, I think I'm about the, sorry, just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, about the JAG grant, JAG grant money, so I think I need to save it until then.
Yes, okay, we'll save that, Mayor.
Okay, all right, just to clarify, thank you, sir. That's all for this time.
Thank you for reading those public comments. Let's hear from the council. Any comments from the council and the public comments? They see none. We will close public comments at this time and comments from the council, and we will move our agenda to our consent calendar, which is item F. On item F, there was one comment. Madam City Clerk, or why don't you read the comment under the consent calendar?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is from Randall Abram, Longdale resident. On the consent calendar tonight, there is a request for approval for $10,752 in JAG, J-A-G, grant money for the illegal fireworks suppression on July 4th. The total cost for the illegal fireworks plan is estimated at $30,000. If these funds help to curtail the barrage of illegal fireworks this year, it will be money well spent. It was previously suggested that the city investigate having the fireworks manufacturers contribute to the costs of the illegal fireworks suppression plans such as the City of Gardena and the City of Carson. At the February 26th, 2021 City Council meeting, I pointed out that the City of Carson requires the wholesalers to have a business license, provide proof of insurance, and pay a permit fee to offset the city's costs. The City of Gardena requires $20,000 annually from each wholesaler or distributor. Shortly after that meeting, I was advised by city staff that those Carson and Gard- that those Carson and Gardena were contacted, providing useful information, provided with options that Longdale can use to offset law enforcement costs. In the three months since, has any further progress been made in having the firework manufacturers make a good faith effort to combat illegal fireworks? In past years, profits of up to $300,000 were seen by these manufacturers. So even as much as $20,000 would be a small price to pay. It was encouraging that the city changed the municipal code to increase the administrative fines for illegal fireworks, along with having the property owners responsible for the actions of its tenants. What is the plan for notifications to residents of Longdale about the increased fines, along with the liability of property owners should illegal fireworks be blasted from their property? When will the letters be sent to all property owners of this liability as we, as was previously indicated? When will there be more metal signs with the illegal fireworks fines placed in more locations in the city? My neighborhood is already hearing fireworks from which I report each time. It has been a year since I requested a sign be placed at the end of my block on Pomona. There is little more than a month before the end of June, with some of the deployment scheduling changes of the SAOs starting shortly. It is hoped that the illegal fireworks suppression plan is in the final stages of implementation. And that concludes the public comment on that item.
Okay, thank you, Madam, for reading the public comments on item two on the consent calendar. I'm gonna ask the city, city manager if he can, if he has any response to item two. In particular, the fireworks on manufacturers issue concerning them contributing to suppression effort.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, we have heard this comment previously, and I think we did contact Carson and Gardena about how they were able to get funding from the fireworks manufacturers. It sounds like a good idea, something that we can pursue. However, when we were working on our suppression plan, we were well into it. And I think something like that would require a change of the city's ordinance and how it goes about its fireworks planning for each year with, for, for safe and, for the sale of safe and sane fireworks. So it was something that we, we thought we would consider for next year. As I've mentioned, the fireworks suppression plan that we have in place is sort of a, you know, living and breathing plan, meaning that, you know, with each next year, we'll, we'll learn from the previous year and we'll make changes as might be necessary or that can be helpful. So, you know, we'll, we'll experience, we'll, we'll put forward our plan this year. We'll see how it works. We'll learn from it. If we do need to make some changes or add to it or subtract from it, we'll do that for next year. In addition, we'll also look at things like approaching the fireworks manufacturers to contribute towards our suppression plan. And if we need to make a change to our ordinance, we'll, we'll bring that to the city council as well.
Okay, thank you for that update, Mr. City Manager. What is the pledge of disbarity concerning item?
Robert, this is Mayor Protem Kearney. I'm making motion to accept the consent calendar as written.
And I'll second it. This is Councilman Suarez.
The motion is made by Protem Kearney and seconded by Councilwoman Ronda Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion for item? Seeing that, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to conduct the vote on it.
Okay, to clarify, this is for the consent calendar, the entire one?
Yes, correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure because I heard the word item also. All right, for the, for the consent calendar, Mayor Protem Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Madam. Next item on our agenda is item, item six, it's Public Works Department, item. Core values and visions. Let's have Stafford.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is Kevin Chenigan, city manager. I had asked Julian Lee, our new director of Public Works, to put together this presentation. As Julian has now been with us for over four months and has had some time to settle into his new position and get to understand the Public Works Department and start working on projects. I, I thought it would be important for him to make this presentation before the city council to let him explain to you, you know, what his sort of philosophies are and what his plans are for, for managing the Public Works Department. So I wanted you to be able to hear that from him tonight. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Julian and to allow him to make this presentation. Julian?
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mayor and member of the council. This is Julian Lee, Director of Public Works. First, I'd like to start with a thanks to the city of Longdale for wonderful opportunity to be, for me to be part of this city. And I hope to enhance the public work services for the residents of the city of Longdale. As Kevin was saying, for past four months, I've been trying to observe how our Public Works Department functions and operates and have evaluated some improvements in its operations. However, before making any changes, what I wanted to do is I wanted to look at the mission statements of the Public Works Department. Take the next slide, please. So the Public Works mission statement reads like this, "We are dedicated to maintaining and improving the quality of life in the city of, city by, planning for the future needs, promoting environmental quality, building and maintaining municipal and public infrastructure, and protecting health and safety." Based on this mission statement, we've assessed several core values that Public Works Department should follow and some vision or established goals that we need to, we need to do for next, for the near future. Next slide, please. For the, for the core values, our department wants to emphasize the importance of people, not just the staff, but also the residents. We want to make sure that the people are respected and people are focused on the value. And also, we want to make sure that there is accountability and make sure that the staff, make sure that the Public Works Department takes responsibility of our, of our decisions, our actions, and our operations. And also respect, both respecting the people within the department, also respecting the people that we serve, and also the process or operation that we follow. And also trust the people that are within our department and also trust the people that are on other department that composes of our city. And the second part of, that, second part of the presentation is also on, is on vision or goals that I want to emphasize. I want to direct our Public Works Department in their master planning, efficient operation and maintenance, and lastly, excellence in customer service. And again, next slide. Before getting into the three goals, I want to show you what our department looks like. So the Public Works Department has three components. One is operations, which is composed, comprised of 10 staff, full-time staff, and two full-time staff in admin section, and three engineering departments, including an inspector. Next slide, please. So as far as the vision or the goal, master planning is very important because we need to know what our short-term and long-term plannings are, and we need to know in several different areas. First of all, payment management system. We need to address what our street conditions are and how we need to develop a long-term goal so that our streets are intact, the streets are protected. Facility needs assessment is, will show how our facility is utilized and how it needs to be maintained. And also, we need to make sure that we plan for our traffic and signal system through the traffic management plan. And lastly, urban forest management plan, who allow us to manage our, our chi canopy and also make our community look better for the both short-term and long-term. Next slide, please. Efficient O N M. We want to increase efficiency in our operation and maintenance. We want to make, we want to make some few changes to see our procedures are being efficient. And also, we want to look at the performance of our contract services to make sure that the contractors are, are doing their works and, and we're getting our money for our back. One other example that we made changes, not in, in the contractor, but in our staff, is we have increasing efficiency in graffiti and trash pickup. What we did was we assigned a quadrant with a staff so that the staff are responsible for those quadrants. And by putting accountability and responsibility on staff, that our, our, if our operations in graffiti and trash pickup has increased through that, through those minor changes. Next slide, please. So finally, I've been, we've been focusing on excellence in customer service. Not a good customer service, but excellent. Going back to the mission statement, we say that we protect the health and safety of the residents. And we want to make sure that our residents are satisfied with our, with our public work services. Another minor change that we made in, in our Public Works Department is that when a customer submits a service request, initially, we'll put it on our work order system. We'll complete our work and we'll close our work order. However, now what we do is before we close out a work order, our staff will contact the residents to make sure that job is complete, not only complete, but complete to that person's satisfaction, so that we have a complete closure on this work. Next slide, please. So again, for past several months, what I've found is that we have an amazing staff, you know, Public Works Department. In admin and engineering and operation, we have staff that are very dedicated, hardworking, and are just, I mean, just love to come to work each day. And what I simply want to do is I want to help them provide a better service so that the residents of Longdale can benefit from their hard work. With that, I'm ready for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Julian, for that, um, lead, for that, that report. I do like it, but let me, let me ask if the council have any questions on the core values and vision report?
It was just a comment I had. I just want to say I love the part, Julian, that you included about when a project's completed, getting back to the residents and letting them know it's been completed. I think that's very, that's great that we're doing that to follow up and to show a little more customer service within the city. So I do appreciate that part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Protem Kearney.
Okay, one question for Julian. When we do graffiti removal, can we try to match the paint that we're painting over the graffiti? We have a white wall with gray paint on it. It doesn't take that hard to take a knife or a scraper, take a paint sample, match that paint. It looks horrendous. You have a white wall with gray paint on it, or sidewalks, it in pressure, pressure worship. They paint it with paint, gray paint. Can we check on that?
Yes, we are looking into all the different colors. One of the colors that we were trying to get is to, to match. There is a type of gray that we want to match, and we were trying to look for that. We actually found it. Our supervisor actually found it, so we are going to be trying to match the, match to what's existing color of the paint. In addition, what we try to do is also in private property where we don't have those colors, we do contact the, the private property owner to see if they do have a paint, and some of them do. There's, there's some, there's some property owners do have those paints, and we will utilize that to match the, the colors of the existing, existing wall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else have any, have questions?
Yes, Mayor, this is Councilwoman Cuevas. I just want to thank Julian for the presentation and also thank public work staff for all their dedication and hard work. And I have seen the graffiti, you know, the paint, like Pat said, not matching, but at least we're trying to remove it as quick as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have one, two observations. One was made by Councilwoman Suarez about the work order on process. I do agree as, as well, that that's excellent on customer service, and I'm glad to see that that's, that's part of the values and visions of program that outlined recently, so thank you for that. Also, the, you mentioned that the, the city, as far as the public work is concerned, is, is going to be split up into different quadrant. Have more staff accountability. I think that's an excellent approach. So that, you know, the old saying goes, when it's everyone's responsibilities, it's no one's responsibility. So I really appreciate that approach to having them in our different quadrants. Going, touching on graffiti very quick. I would imagine that this will also help improve the graffiti takedown of time. We have in my area, I guess it's a, it looked like it's gang-related. One white wall with red graffiti, and they found that, which was, it was not even a big piece of graffiti, but for some reason, right next to it, not right next to it, but maybe a couple of feet, a whole garage was, was marked, seemed like it's from the same, you know, person. And I don't know if they're having a problem getting the, the owners to consent to them painting over it, which I couldn't imagine, but it's been there for at least a week. And the, the writing on the, little writing on the other wall was there for probably about a couple of days. So I don't know why they didn't get the graffiti on the garage or object in the other. So I guess this quadrant, seems like this quadrant approach would allow us to have more accountability. Hopefully, we also will have graffiti person available on the weekend comes, next budget, budget of time. So that's all I want to add, Mr. Public Works Director. Appreciate folks over there in Public Works. That'll be it for item six. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item seven. This is agreement for community development block grant assistance plan. Let's have Stafford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the audience. This is Sean, Director of Community Development. And the item before you tonight is consideration of agreement for community development block grant administration assistance, implementation, and labor, labor compliance. As the council's aware and the public, we work with the County of Los Angeles for our block grant funding with the Los Angeles County Development Authority, and annually they provide roughly about $320,000 annually to the city. And that's used for approved activities such as road improvements as well as senior activities. Typically, every year I bring items before you to consider every December when we start lining up and working with Public Works and Community Services Department to determine what activities we're requesting to be approved by LACTA. Recently, MBA has been providing, Michael Baker International has been providing our services for our administration of our community development block grant. But that contract has since been up, and every three years we renew a contract and we send out for requests for proposals. And so that's what the department, the Community Development Department sent out for proposals, seeking new information, new proposals from Michael Baker. proposals from Mike Baker. We received one from Michael Baker, one from Will Dan, and one from CSG Consultants. It's outlined in the staff report on page two. Michael Baker came in at forty three thousand six ninety. Second close was Will Dan, and CSG Consultants came in a higher number around three hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. Michael Baker is also scored very well. They're knowledgeable about the city. They worked with many other cities in Los Angeles County directly with LACTA. They have tremendous experience, but so did Will Dan, and CSD had some pretty good experience as well. But overall, the the committee chose Will, Michael Baker, to move forward based on their experience and knowledge and working with directly with community development grants. Therefore, staff recommended recommending an agreement continuing to work with Michael Baker. There's that there's staff, there's funding available to to continue with working with Michael Baker. In addition, because of some unspent activity monies, there were rolling over another ten thousand three hundred and eighty. That's why the total contract amount is above the forty three thousand six ninety. It's actually fifty six six ninety because there were some rolled over activities from previous years unused. This concludes staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions we have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for this staff report. Are there any questions of the staff report, item seven? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning item seven?
This is Councilwoman Cuevas. I motion to approve the agreement for MBI.
Motion made it, but we approve item seven by Cuevas.
Mayor, this is Rep. Tim Kearney. I'll second it.
Seconded by Pro Tem Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here are none. I'm going to ask the city clerk to throw on item seven.
Okay, for item number seven, Mayor Pro Tem Kearney.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Poland Miles?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, madam. Item number eight, consideration of the City of Londale Crossing Guard Program.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. This is Mike Estes, Director of Community Services, to present the following agenda item, reconsideration of the City of Londale Crossing Guard Program. In the mid nineties, the city began the Crossing Guard Program specifically in nineteen ninety six in conjunction with the Londale Elementary School District. And the purpose of the intent of the program was to cross children safely across the busy streets and boulevards that surround the schools and to get them on their way to school, from school, and to get them to school safely. Once again, we believe that started back in nineteen ninety six. And recently, there was a council request to bring this item back. So traditionally, the the contract has been for ten crosswalk locations. Ten locations, but sixteen crosswalks. Some locations have two crosswalks. For example, one may go north, south, another may go east, west. So those two crosswalks would be connected to one location, but traditionally, the the contract has had ten crosswalk locations. There was no funding in the contract for FY twenty twenty one for obvious reasons due to the pandemic, the closure of local schools, and not really knowing when school would return to face to face learning, which they just recently did. So our last contract expired in June of two thousand twenty at the end of the eighteen nineteen, actually, at the end of the nineteen twenty school year. In terms of costs, we reached out to All City Management Services, or ACMS, who has been the city's crossing guard vendor since way back in nineteen ninety six. And part of the reason they have been the city's main crossing guard contractors because they have generally been the only game in town. There have been other companies that have arisen in recent years, but they don't last too long, and most of them don't really specialize in this type of work. Typically, you'll see companies, security guard companies that dabble in in this business, but they are really the only game in town, the only one we know of in Southern California. And in many cases, they do a lot of work throughout the state. So we reached out to them to get a proposal, a cost proposal proposal for a potential new contract, which you'll see on page two of the staff report. And with after our discussions with them, they revealed that their costs for a new contract, a two year contract, is typically what we've done in the past because we do get cheaper costs with a two year contract. There's been a few times where we have had a one year contract, but we don't reap the benefits of that second year and the decreases that come with it. But compared to the last hourly rate, which we had in the the past contract for two thousand nineteen and twenty, which was nineteen seventy nine per hour, they are suggesting a approximately a twenty five percent increase over that rate for the first year of an eventual new contract, specifically about four dollars and seventy two cents. And then for year two, it's a milder increase of about nineteen percent. So those are the costs that we got firsthand from All City Management Services, who, by the way, is very interested in retaining our business. In looking at the contract, the previous contracts, you know, we do to do diligence to see if there's any way we could cut service to this contract without sacrificing quality. And in my analyzation, I did suggest that we could cut thirty minutes per crosswalk location off of each off of each crosswalk location, and times ten, you're looking at a savings of about five hours per day with ten locations. So, you know, if we were able to, if if the City Council was interested in entering into a new contract for this service, we would recommend cutting service by thirty minutes. Again, we do think that we could do the job in three paid hours per day per crosswalk location as opposed to three and a half. The staff recommends that the City Council provide direction to staff regarding crossing guard services and whether to include one hundred and twenty four thousand eight hundred and forty eight dollars in the FY two thousand twenty two budget for crossing guard services. And that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estes, for that report. Let's have some discussion on this item. Who would like to discuss this item?
Mayor, this is Councilwoman Cuevas. Due to all the craziness of drivers that we currently have, I would like to see crossing guards just to keep our kids safe crossing the major intersections. I do think that we don't need three and a half hours per day. I do agree with Mike, three hours is more than enough. And if possible, if we have the funds, I would like to see it in in the budget.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mayor, Rep. Tim Kearney?
Yes, yes, sir.
I'm looking over the locations. And let's say Way of Anderson, Murphy Fourth and Osage, that is a street right across from the school. I think the parents can cross them there. And then we do have a new signal on Marina Osage and its signals and its crosswalks, Bart. I understand Shirley, Councilwoman Cuevas's concerns, but we don't know what's going to happen next school year. We don't know if it's going to be a hybrid in person like it is right now. It's a hybrid. Some can come and some can stay home. We don't know if the parents that are home right now, if they're going to be working from home from starting now to to the future. I just like to see we hold off on the crossing guards because I have some concerns, and I'll discuss it in the budget committee. I mean, we, every one of these crossing has signal and crosswalks. I understand the children's safety, but you know, the parents got to take some responsibility for this too. They have to teach your children how to cross a street. They have to be observant of the cars. I walk my granddaughters and they're verbs, and they know how to cross. I'd like to see this, you know, continued turn after the budget committee and to see what the school's going to do next year.
Yes, yes, sir. Anyone else want to speak on this item?
This is Councilmember Suarez. I guess my question would be what the school was proposing to do. And I I can guess that they're probably just going to leave it up to us. But just curious as to to what their plan is. And then I have similar concerns to Shirley in that, just for the safety of of the kids, and so I can see that direction. I have had residents reach out to me and and bring that up, that that was a major concern for them. And I do know that we have had it in the past, so. And the other question, sorry, the second question would be, can we alter the contract at a certain point during the school year depending on what the school decides? Or do we have to? Does it have to stay with ten? Or or is it flexible?
Councilwoman Suarez, I can handle those questions. We believe that way back in ninety six, when the crosswalks were selected, that they were chosen by the Londale Elementary School District. So originally, it was their request for ten crosswalks, and you know, we've been doing this for twenty five years now, and I've been here fourteen now, and there hasn't been any change in those crosswalks. I think what you're talking about is some type of open ended contract where we kind of work it as we go and only provide the service that we need. That sounds like that's a concern to you as well. So the city, the city has not been too involved in determining which crosswalks are covered. We've left it up to the school district to tell us what crosswalks are to be covered. And I think that 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 helps us liability wise because it is their school that we're providing services for. I I hope that that answers some of your questions. If it didn't, I'd be happy to take another crack at it.
Thanks, Mike. You you, I think you answered it perfectly. But did you have a response as to any ideas to the school? Have they reached out to us, asking us also to reinstate the crosswalks? Does anyone know the answer to that?
I would I would defer to City Manager Kevin Chun on this one. He probably has more information than I do.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Thanks, Mike, and Councilmember Suarez. As you know, we we have had many discussions with the school district since the last year. Most of them have not been related to crossing guards. Most have been related to the other issue that we'll be discussing with the next item related to parks. But it has come up from time to time. And I I don't know what their plans are if the city does not fund crossing guards. I think they are waiting to see what happens with the city following this meeting and what is going to be included in the budget or not. And then at that point, I suppose there there could be some decisions that are made. But they haven't really discussed what their what their plans are specifically.
Mayor, this is Rep. Tim Kearney. Also, Kevin alluded from mentioning this is funded by city only. The school district's not pitching in anything. It's another cost to the city for the school district for a free ride.
Mayor, this is Rhonda Hoffman Gorman. May I speak?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I would also like to share an opinion on the matter. As far as history with shot with crossing guards in the city of Londale, I can tell you back in nineteen seventy two, when I first started crossing Manhattan Beach Boulevard, from that point on, the city of Londale has had some type of crossing guard available for the students. And so this is to me very important. And what even makes it more important and has been failed to be seen is I myself, as a parent, have been in front of Jane Addams School in particular, and also a couple of the other ones in which, if you're ever wanting to see something interesting and just an absolute possibility of an accident, just be in front of one of our schools and see the craziness at drop off and pickup and the fact that the parents all need to be at work at a certain time, and so they're it it's a it's absolutely chaotic. If we were to take away crossing guards, the kids that were walking, their parents are going to be, it's going to increase the the problem in front of our schools. So not only for children's safety, but for the community's safety, I feel like it is really important. I can tell you back as far as in the seventies, the city did fund the crossing guard. I believe it has always been that way. And I think in the future, we probably could work on something, but I think at this point, stepping into this school year, we better have a, the city better take care of it. It it's too short notice, I think, for the school district to have to pick up this fund and have that thrown on them.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I I do know that they are going to do full session in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. As far as I know, I haven't heard of them, you know, funding anything, but maybe we could fund three hours a day per crossing guard and start working on an agreement with the school district. And maybe they could help us out, you know, for next year, for the following year.
I agree with you, Shirley, and I had one more question for Mike Estes.
Yes.
If if Mike, again, and it kind of piggybacks off of what Bernadette had had asked. If by chance, this pandemic raises its head again, and we do go back into more at home learning for whatever reason, is can we write a contract in which that price gets fluctuated if our kids quit going into our school because of an emergency situation like that?
Well, that's something we would have to discuss with the contractor. That's never been discussed before. I I would hope that they would be open to hearing that type of discussion. You know, and and we also have the ability to gather pedestrian counts as well from the contractor as well. If we request that, they will tell us how many kids are crossing which crosswalk in the morning, which kids are crossing in the afternoon. That helps us keep an eye on, you know, which crosswalks are busy and which aren't, although it fluctuates each year with school attendance. But I don't know if Mr. Murphy would like to con to comment on that type of contract. I've never been involved in one of those myself, but maybe Mr. Murphy would like to comment on what that type of contract would look like.
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Murphy provides a response, I I'd like to just interject something based on what Mike said. This is Kevin Chen, City Manager. If if the previous contract that we had with All City Management Services is any indication, we did not have to pay for crossing guard services after the pandemic began last year. So it's it seems that it would be based on services rendered versus just paying for the contract regardless if the service was needed or not. So of course, that that would be something, as Mike said, that we would discuss with All Cities Management Services, ACMS, we would discuss that with them and make sure that that is the case. But I'm pretty sure that's how the the contract is structured anyways.
Well, that's the only question that I have. Thank you, Kevin, for for answering that. But I I do feel that the city needs to go ahead this year and and fund this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments.
Questions for Michael?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, for some reason, when people call me, it turns my recording down low for some reason. I don't know that's about. But anyway, I was gonna say that although everyone knows that, you know, for years I've been trying to get the the school district to participate in the funding of the crossguards. I do understand the importance of having the crossguards to safeguard our children as they cross, you know, the our streets to make sure that they're safe. Notwithstanding the fact that the school district for some reason does not feel the need to participate, I think it's still very important for us. I think it's still very important um, for us to provide this service um, to our families and to our, our young children. I mean, I've had young children myself, um, they're, they're not at that age now where they need necessary need to be assisted. But there's a lot of um, obviously, just um, children in our community that do need assistance and make sure they're pa, paying attention to what have you crossing, crossing the street. And you're right, Councilwoman, when you talk about these crazy drivers. On just the other day, there was a driver, he decided that since he had the open road, he was first in line, that he was gonna beat everyone else up to the next light. And he burnt rubber out for no reason. And you have a lot of those kind of activities going on um, since the pandemic and probably will continue for at least some time. So with that, I'm inclined to support this. Um, I think our budget um, will be able to sustain it. And I think we should um, put it up, budget. So my thoughts on this matter.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Councilwoman Cuevas. Um, with that said, is there any way that the school district could let us know how many children from each section um, we have so that we could plan which guards go to post? Maybe we don't need ten because a certain section of the, of the city, we don't have that many students. Is that something?
Yeah, they, they indeed can. And the, the, the crossing guard company as well will have the, the, you know, the data on how many um, students actually um, cross their particular um, particular post. But we, we do wanna be um, careful to make sure that the, the school district themselves um, um, kind of selected the districts, not the district, the, the post, the crossing areas. So to ensure that um, that we are posting a, a um, crossing guard at an intersection that is truly needed and not something that we just suppose is, is needed. And I think they're probably in a better position um, to determine that in terms of um, of liability and um, actual um, need. But that's definitely something that could, they can definitely uh, report to us on.
Thank you. And I believe Marla has her hand raised.
Yes.
I don't see Marla's hand raised.
It is raised, but um.
Just um, come in and, and say your name.
Yes, this is Marla Pendleton, the Director of Finance. You had asked a question about if the budget would uh, sustain the cost. As of this uh, moment, we have balanced our budget um, for next year. The Budget Subcommittee has not had an opportunity to see it yet or comment on the contents of it. We do not have crossing guards included in it. If we were to include crossing guards, we would then have to cut other costs in the balancing. So at, as of this moment, we do not have funding for that. So I would like to make a suggestion uh, for council consideration. And that would be maybe to defer the vote until the Subcommittee has reviewed the entire budget and its content, cuz they have not done that.
Well.
Mr. Mayor, if I, I'm sorry, if I might, this is Kevin Chen again, City Manager. Um, Marla is correct. We, we have not had um, the um, ci, the Budget Subcommittee review the budget as of yet. So um, obviously, the, the, the budget is still in its preliminary form. And what I would like to do with Marla, depending on how the council votes on this, what I would like to do with the Finance Department is um, uh, look to see what it is that we can do to um, have a balanced budget um, prepared before we uh, present it to the Subcommittee. So that's what I would hope to do with um, the City Council's um, actions tonight. Uh, if it chooses to include the, the um, crossing guards um, in the budget, then we will take that into consideration, rework the budget to come up with a balanced budget again and then present that to the um, the Subcommittee. I would not want to take um, you know, uh, an imbalanced budget or a budget that's not, you know, uh, fully um, uh, that, that's not balanced to the Subcommittee. So I would like to take a su, a balanced budget to the Subcommittee first.
Okay. So let me make sure I understand, uh, Mr. City Manager. It sound like you're saying if the, if it is the desire of the council tonight to have the crossing guards included, you would take that fact that it's a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and you would work that into the, into the budget so that you would have a, a balanced budget to present to the, this Budget Subcommittee?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Mayor. So uh, Marla is correct that if um, the um, crossing guard expense were to be approved by the council and if it were to be inserted into the budget as of today, um, there isn't the funding to um, fund the program. However, you know, again, it is still a preliminary budget and I would like to work with the Finance Department to see what could be done to um, balance the budget before it's presented to the Subcommittee.
Okay. Balance the budget with, with the um, hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar expenditure for the crossing guard program um, factored into.
Mayor, this is Mayor Pro Tem Kearney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for uh, one question for Michael. With the cutting down to three hours, will the contract still be one twenty-four and change? Or be less than that?
Uh, the, the uh, the numbers in the staff report are reflecting a thirty-minute decrease per crosswalk location every day, every school day.
Okay, and my next uh, concern, we have a Budget Subcommittee on Monday. Can we contend, is, is it a dire needed vote on this right tonight? Or can we wait till the Subcommittee meets on Monday, the twenty-fourth? I, I, I don't wanna see it.
I think we could wait for, for this to be, until we meet uh, with the Subcommittee.
Yeah, we meet on the twenty-fourth at two o'clock.
Right, because the kids don't start school until September. But we need to make sure that if we're gonna go with it, then we need to add, try to put it on the budget.
And then that gives Michael time to find out if, you know, something happens. Can we get out of this contract? Can we reduce some of this, this, the uh, crossing guard? Like Anderson School, Rogers, it's one fifty-fourth and O-Sage. It's, it's a maybe fifty feet crosswalk. But anyway, let's just continue this till after the Budget Subcommittee, if we may, with the rest of councils.
Well, Mr. Mayor and, and uh, Councilmember Kearney, if um, Mayor Pro Tem Kearney, if I might, um, that is fine, but I'm just looking at this from a timing issue. Um, this is the last meeting in May and uh, we had hoped to use the two meetings in June for uh, the budget um, presentation and then also budget approval. So um, uh, w, w, we, maybe I can make a recommendation if the council wants to um, approve the um, crossing guard program tonight, but make it contingent upon uh, further review of the Budget Subcommittee. Um, that way, you know, we'll know whether or not we need to try to make these um, adjustments now to include this in the budget. Um, and then, you know, we can also do that other work to find out uh, whether or not um, the contractor, ACMS, um, would be agreeable to having the contract open to, you know, only services rendered. So for example, if the pandemic were to, you know, come back and children had to be at home again, uh, we would not be responsible for, you know, the contract payments, you know, if, if, if the crossing guards weren't working. So um, but, but I, I think we do need some direction from the council, whether it wants to move forward with the program or not. And then we can make those budget um, you know, adjustments as we need to, moving forward from here.
Well, uh, Mayor, this is Mayor Pro Tem Kearney again. I think we made it, I suggested that we table this until after the Subcommittee on the twenty-fourth and see where it plays in. And I, I believe Councilwoman Cuevas was okay with that. They don't have to make a decision yet, cuz we don't start school until September.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is uh, Mike Estes. If I could just make one really quick clarification, I think could be important here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, Mike Estes, Director of Community Services, once again. Uh, the start date for school at which students will return, uh, assuming that they do, will be August twenty-fifth. Wednesday, August twenty-fifth is uh, LE, LESD's return date. So that, that shortens the timeline just a little bit from September.
But still feasible.
I, I believe so.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna make a motion since we, that we continue this till after Monday's Subcommittee cuz we still have, like Kevin says, the two meetings in June to do our budget. And I wanna see what, what we have to cut first, if we have to cut anything before we put this in the budget. I'm okay with the crossing guards. I think some of the locations are questionable, like I would talk to Mike and Kevin about it. But I think we should continue this till after Monday's meeting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think if I heard correctly, yes, I, I'm okay with tabling it. But I think the city still needs some direction as to if um, the council wants them to proceed with building this into the um, budget for the Subcommittee. Is that correct?
That's what I was trying to say, yes, Councilmember.
So my understanding is that uh, oh, we're going down. Budget Subcommittee have direction, basically, staff will have crossing guard program budget. So they have insured program and budget kind of play. Basically, basically, because budget's already balanced, proposed budget's balanced. They have the program, we work with, work with.
Mr. Mayor, um, you, you're cutting out a little bit. Um, you, we, we can't hear you very clearly.
Okay, can you?
That's better.
Okay, for some reason, my volume dropped when someone called me here as well. So what we were looking to do um, um, originally was to instruct the staff to include the crossing guard program to the tune of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars into the budget, which means proposed budget as it is now is balanced, which means they're gonna have to rework the proposed budget to add the one hundred and twenty-four thousand um, dollars, which means obviously they were gonna have to cut um, somewhere so that the budget is balanced. That balanced budget will go to the Budget Subcommittee for review. When it goes to the Budget Subcommittee, um, that budget will have the crossing guard program in it. Now, whatever the Budget Subcommittee determine is up to the Budget Subcommittee. But nevertheless, the crossing guard program will be in that balanced budget that is presented to the Subcommittee. Correct?
That's cor, that is correct, Robert, but what do they gotta cut to ma, to get the crossing guards in? The Subcommittee need to know what they're gonna cut, not bring us a balanced budget. We, Shirley and I have to sit in on this meeting to know what they're gonna cut.
Well, that's just it. When they, when they break it to the Subcommittee, it's the, it's a proposal. Yes, it will have the crossing guard program in it, but it's a proposal. And the Subcommittee obviously can say, well, your proposal is to cut this, is to cut A, B, and C. No, we think you should cut, you know, X, Y, and Z. So the Budget Committee, Subcommittee will still have that opportunity to decide how it's gonna be balanced and what cuts gonna be, gonna uh, be included in the budget.
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct. Um, my, my intention is to bring a balanced budget to the Subcommittee. I would not wanna present a, a, um, a budget to the Subcommittee that wasn't balanced. Um, that would then, you know, be putting staff's work onto the Subcommittee. I would want um, us to, to do that work beforehand so that it is a, you know, an, a, a budget that um, is viable. If it's uh, not balanced, then the budget is not viable and then we will not have, you know, finished our work. So that's, that's what I'm proposing that we do here. And that's the direction that we're looking for. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, this is Greg Murphy. We, we do have a pen pushin' from the Mayor Pro Tem. Um, I, I believe it was to table this matter so that the Budget Subcommittee can meet. Uh, staff has been given their direction and so it would be to bring this matter back, I believe, at the first meeting in June when you get your uh, a, as part of the budget presentation um, so that the council can discuss it more at that time. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that is true. Thank you, uh, Mr. Murphy. Um, although there were no second um, on it, so it's technically is not on the floor. Um, just, just to be um, technical.
I think uh, Miss Councilwoman Cuevas.
We need to do that if that's the pleasure of the body. I, the reason why I was, my argument was that it's, I don't really see the necessity of it because the Budget Subcommittee will still have the opportunity to, to review the budget and decide if those cuts are acceptable or not, or what have you. As opposed to if not, the staff will be bringing, like the City Manager said, a, a, a budget that is not balanced and you basically could be starting budget process from scratch, doing the work of staff. But whatever the pleasure of the, the uh, council is, um, I'm okay with it. But I get the point of the City Manager.
This is Councilmember Suarez.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm of the thought of just proceeding with the contract and then making the numbers work. Um, and then formally voting for it at the budget meeting.
Okay.
Was that a motion, Bernadette?
Am I entertaining a motion?
Uh, is that a counter motion, I guess?
No, it would, it, it's a totally motion cuz we, we never had a motion on the floor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe we do have a motion on the floor.
Who made it and who seconded?
Hold on.
I know.
We're consulting to go back and.
I know Mayor Pro Tem did um, propose something, but no one ever seconded.
I thought this.
Right, no, there wasn't a, sorry.
No. I, I, I did a motion. I started speaking about why I, we, we should have this, but I haven't motioned anything.
Okay. If we could just, for a moment.
Counter motion.
No, it's just a motion. It's just a main motion.
Ease Erica's looking back, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Well, I believe what we can, okay, that's fine.
Then I'll just make that motion that we proceed. Subcommittee can look at the numbers, yea or nay, what we wanna cut, and we go on.
I'll, I'll second that. Uh, Ca, uh, Councilwoman Cuevas seconds that.
Thank you. So the motion was made by Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez and seconded by uh, Councilwoman Suarez um, that we refer the matter to the, that we refer the matter to the, the Budget Subcommittee with the crossing guard program included in a balanced budget that's gonna be presented um, from the staff to the Budget Subcommittee. Is there any more discussion on the motion on item six, item eight? Here now, I'm gonna ask uh, Madam City Clerk to uh, who was the vote, the roll call? In the vote.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, then, on item eight, Mayor Pro Tem Kearney?
No.
Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes with Mayor Pro Tem Kearney voting no.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on the agenda is item nine, City Parks Subcommittee Recommendation. That's how the staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. As um, some of the City Council members may recall from our budget process last year, um, the um, Budget Subcommittee at the time that was made up of um, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Kearney um, and former City Council Member Dan Reed um, uh, made a recommendation that the city uh, essentially relinquished the parks, the three um, joint-use parks with the Longdale Elementary School District um, back to the district um, because of concerns regarding um, the city's funding of the parks in full and the fact that. regarding, um, the city's funding of the parks in full and the fact that, um, the, uh, district was not paying their proportional share of the use of the parks. Um, the city council at the time last year, uh, considered the budget subcommittee's recommendation and, um, um, agreed with that, um, recommendation and, uh, directed staff to, um, work to relinquish the parks back to the school district. However, upon looking at the agreement for the parks, um, we found that there is a provision that requires a one-year notice, um, before, uh, either party can terminate the agreement. So the council directed staff to, um, have, um, this, to have, to have us, uh, give our intention to the, to, to notify the school district of our intention to relinquish the parks. And the council also directed staff to, at the same time, see if there was a way that, uh, we could continue with our partnership on the parks and negotiate a new agreement. So since, um, the budget was passed last year, um, staff did notify the district of its intent to relinquish the parks as of July one, two thousand twenty-one, um, and, um, also since that time, staff has been working with, um, the district staff to come up with terms that could be agreeable, um, on both sides on a potential cost-sharing type of an agreement. The, um, the city's, um, Parks Subcommittee, uh, which is made up of Mayor Pro Tem Kearney and, um, Councilmember Cuevas, um, has been, has also met on two occasions with the, um, District Subcommittee to see if an agreement could be reached. Unfortunately, an agreement could not be reached, um, and in addition to that, um, our two council members on the Subcommittee have, um, a, a bit of a difference in opinion in terms of a recommendation for the city council. So, um, in the staff report, I've noted, um, the recommendations from both Mayor Pro Tem Kearney and Council, uh, Member Cuevas, and at this point, um, staff is looking for direction from the city council in terms of, um, what it would like to do, uh, regarding the three joint-use parks and whether or not, um, um, the city will continue funding the parks, um, or relinquish the parks or some other direction, but we do need that direction from the city council for budget purposes. So with that, um, that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for that, um, uh, report. So let's have a discussion on, um, this concern of relinquishing. Who wants to speak on this item first?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Kearney, I was big on it first.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Yeah, Councilwoman and Sw- uh, Cuevas and I were, uh, at several different, I wanted to relinquish all the parks back, give them back to the school, or try to acquire the three parks from the school and become ours, so we take care of them, and that ruffled some feathers. And then I think we had a consensus, Shirley can answer this after I'm done, that we had a consensus to keep in Adams and giving Roger Anderson and Green back to the, the school district. Uh, this report is incomplete cuz it doesn't say how one of the, uh, school board trustees requesting our budget, and that, the, the amount is all wrong in here, that's not what it, this has a potential of a hundred forty-seven, four, twenty, twenty-six, it's more like two fifty, two twenty. Uh, I've still on the pretense of giving back Roger Anderson, which we, we don't use, uh, Green, we could have our events on our own parks, we have Hogan, we have, uh, Hopper, and we have, um, Rudolph, we can hold Easter egg hunts in one of those parks, we can do a lot of events on our own parks, so I, I'm still leaning towards giving those two parks back and keeping J.D.M.'s, cuz that's where we do our music festival and other events there. And with push come to shove, uh, Little League, football, AYSO can all do, get it, do permits from those two parks from the school district. We do everything, we handle the maintenance, we handle the permits, we handle any leakage in the fields, we pay for that, uh, tree trimming, utilities out of hand, we pay an average of seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars a year in water. And of course, the school district said that I have no money, they think we should keep doing it, pay for it, I, you know, this, uh, cash, the others are gonna run dry one day, and we're gonna be in a world of hurt if we don't have the school district pays something. The ad hoc thing was ridiculous, I didn't like the idea, they pay, a water main breaks down, it costs sixty thousand dollars, they pay thirty, we pay thirty, where are they gonna get the thirty thousand dollars from? They have no money. So those were my, uh, thoughts and my discussion and my, uh, my, uh, well, that's what I think. I'll pass it on to someone else.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pro Tem. Um, anyone else have any thoughts?
This is Councilmember Suarez.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to add some color to the meeting that we had a year ago, because, and I, if I recall correctly, former council member James Osborne and I had similar hesitations with just saying, giving up, ma- um, uh, saying we weren't going to, giving that termination agreement, and I think our understanding was that we would revisit, we kinda sent it out initially to see what the school board would say, um, but we were both, um, not completely sold on the idea of just, uh, just severing the agreement, um, just because we felt that the parks were a benefit to, to the public, to the, to the ci- the residents, and so just wanted to add that in there, is, is, I guess this is the meeting where it's coming back and where we're rediscussing it, but that was one of our hesitations, we, we initially, you know, said, let's send out that letter, see what the school board comes back with. Um, from what I understand, I don't, I think generally speaking, the schools aren't doing so well, I know the birth rate has been declining, there's less enrollment, they're getting less money, so I can kinda see where they're struggling at this point in terms of finances, um, but I just wanted to throw out there, I wasn't completely sold on the idea of just severing the agreement, so I just wanted to state that.
M- Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Councilmember Cuevas, um, I, I feel that we, we should continue with the parks, um, if it's at that potential a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, um, for all three parks, if that's, if someone could confirm that, and revisit it or continue communications with the school district to see, you know, maybe in a year they'll be able to put some funds in there, but I know the city cannot continue to fund for another five to ten years, but we could try to continue to, uh, some type of communication with the school district to help us out. Um, but maybe we, we do an agreement for one year and revisit it, uh, but I don't think we should close the parks at this time.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Quivas.
Mayor, this is Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would like to also state that I'm basically on the same page as Shirley Cuevas on this one, I believe that we have had a longstanding relationship with our school board, um, do I like paying a hundred percent of the parks? No, but I think this particular year, I think we ought to be paying it, I think, um, if we do have, like, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Kearney said, a pipe burst and it costs us fifty or sixty thousand, we can reach out to them, I think they would be open to that. Um, I don't know for sure, but I'm, I, I don't think of them as unrealistic individuals, so I also feel the same way, is that we can't keep continuing doing this one hundred percent long-term, but we need to, um, keep, keep going at it as a partnership and not trying to sever that partnership on those parks, it's too, they are valuable to our residents, all you have to do is drive by on any given day and seeing the families that are in the park, I happened to be at Hogan Park just the other day, and there's a daddy with three kids that came out and recognized me as a city official and thanked me for the fact that we had a park, and he says he visits the Longdale Parks daily, these things are valuable to our community, and I think they're still worth, um, investing in, and, and let's re- readdress this, let's keep going with this subcommittee, um, and keeping the lines of communication open with the school district and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Kearney.
Yes, I'm a, yes, sir, great.
Okay, uh, uh, you know, parks are important, but right now, if they relinquish Green, Adams, I mean Rogers and Adamson, why can't their staff open up the parks like our staff's doing right now? I mean, uh, uh, let's utilize our parks too, and one of the points, one of the trustees says, well, you have not, no, not enough open space, park space, well, that's true, but it's not a requirement, it's a recommendation, and since then, we built three new parks, well, we built two brand-new parks and, and made addition on another. Uh, I, I don't, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'll be very blunt, the school district's a bunch of pre-loaders, and, and the cost is not what he written this, this report's incomplete, it hits and misses, the cost is not one forty-seven, four, twenty, twenty-six, it's two hundred and fifty, two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, I think we should keep Adams, get those two parks back to the school district, and they can open and close the parks just like we do. But that's my two cents.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Pro Tem for adding that. I just wanted to add, um, my, um, observation. In the, um, the best-case scenario in the would be, if at all possible, be item C, foreign free park. Don't know if that is, if we're in a position to do so financially, that would be the best-case scenario. I'm assuming that we're not in a position, you correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Madam Finance Director and Mr. Manager, we're in a position to acquire, um, free parks.
Mr. Mayor, if, if, uh, you were pausing there for an answer, um, I, I'm not sure what the cost of acquiring the park space would be, but I think the bigger question is if even the school district, um, would be allowed to, um, sell off that, those parks or those parks to the city for this purpose, I'm not sure, there is, um, Mr. Murphy can, can, can chime on this more, but, um, I, I believe, um, there is, there are state laws in place related to, um, schools and their property and, and how their property can be sold or not.
Uh, as Mayor and Council, that i- in much the same way that there are some pretty severe restrictions on a city selling off parkland that the city owns, uh, school districts do have, uh, restrictions on selling parcels so that they would no longer be for school use, um, which makes a sort of situation like yours common in the state of California because you wind up with the school district continuing to own what are essentially its playgrounds, um, that it's always owned, but then, uh, the city, or in some cases, a recreation and park district partnering for the maintenance and upkeep and then, uh, doing the programming outside of school hours, um. I'm, I'm fairly new to the agreement that we have right now, but in looking at it, uh, if it were the will of the council to not make a change right now, certainly, we can go back to the school district and have a, a similar agreement to the one that you terminated last year, but, uh, an agreement that would be for one year, um, with the understanding that we need to negotiate some of the terms if the city is going to enter into any longer-term agreement, uh, that would be possible to do and, and get, get that shaped up for you if that was your will, um, but yes, uh, to the point of, of acquiring the land, Kevin's right, that would take, uh, some time and some work by the school district to be able to, to calve that off to us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney for that, that clarification. Let me move, um, on to.
Mayor, this is Marla Pendleton, uh, Finance Director, you had a question, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, I heard you ask, say, uh, with the Finance Director, but I didn't hear the question, could you repeat it?
The question was whether or not, um, we had the financial means to, uh, acquire parks should the opportunity presented itself, if we were allowed.
We do have some funding, we have, um, U-DAG funding that's sitting aside, and we still have, uh, we still have some park maintenance money, and we also, part, you know, for park improvements, and we also have money, a little bit of our, uh, tax anticipation bond money, so we do have a little, it just depends on how much it would cost and if they would be willing to sell. Um, I know based on the Subcommittee meeting, it, they, it didn't sound like they would, but it wasn't a, a, a serious proposal, you know, offer at that time.
Okay, that's good to know, we have a few dollars, um, should the opportunity presented itself, but it sounds like there's some tremendous hurdles, um, seeing that, uh, school district too, I'm just hoping their property.
It, it could be, Mr. Mayor, um, it, there, there could be some significant hurdles, um, i- 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 if this is something that the council wanted to pursue, of course, we would talk with the school district and, 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 um, try to work through that with them. Um, the cost also, you know, obviously would be based on, like Marla said, if they would be willing to sell, and then also what would be the appraised value of property like that, so we don't have any of those specifics at this point.
Okay, um.
Uh, Mayor, this is Pat again, I believe I presented that to Superintendent Kevin, and she said she would research and get back to you, but that was a month ago. And, uh, he, Kevin also alluded about how the trustees requesting our bond money, our grant money, where we spend our money. But, you know, uh, it was a ver- I thought it was, we were bumping our heads against the wall, it was just a, they weren't gonna give us anything. And the assists keep paying, and Shirley Cuevas, Councilwoman Cuevas, you can add to it, that's the way I felt.
Okay, thank you for that, that clarification, Councilmember Pro Tem.
Yeah.
Let me discuss, um, item, um, um, B, um, I do agree, first of all, I do wanna continue with the, um, with the park relationship, I'm just trying to figure out how we do it. I do agree that we definitely need to keep James Adam Park, um, definitely. I, I wanna have some discussion on the need for Anderson, but let me back up, I do see the need for Jane Adam's Park and William Green. I'm not so, sold on Anderson, um, Park. Um, I've only known the city to have very few functions, um, identity with Anderson Park. Functions that I have attended, um, Anderson Park tend to be a private, um, function, um, whether it was the, uh, Pop Warner, or, or what have you, um, which like, Mayor Pro Tem said, they could easily get them up to mention their fields or what have you, so I'm wondering, do we really need Anderson Park? I wanna have the parks, but I don't wanna quote-unquote buy more than what we need, sounds like now we, we, we buying more than what we need, see William Green, see Jane Adam, but I don't understand, um, Roger, um, Anderson Park, but I could be wrong, maybe I, maybe I missed it, kind of, in around. Now, I get the gym, get the gymnasium, uh, to separate from Anderson Park. But I would like to really know if we really, really need, um, that park or not. But I would like to really know if we really, really need, um, that park or not, uh, A- Anderson Park and maybe if we relinquish Anderson Park, maybe that will save us some some money and some maintenance costs. But I'm not at this point, um, I'm not at this point ready to to support, uh, relinquishing Jane Addams Park or William Green Park. I would like to see that we continue with those two parks. Have to continue with all three of them. We can continue with all three of them for this next fiscal year. And but the, continue to talk to the school district, um, to see what would happen if we relinquished, um, Anderson Park and maintain, uh, our agreement with the other two parks. Subject, of course, to them just saying that, yes, we will sell you the parks that I have. But some. That's pretty much my position so far. Anyone? Who did you think on that or have any response to that?
Mike Estes, um, what do we use, uh, Roger Anderson for? Do we do anything in that park?
You know, Rogers Anderson Park is generally used for, uh, a lot of permits, uh, private and, uh, city cosponsored events like Longdale Little League will use all three parks at times, mostly Jane Addams, uh, Longdale Youth Football will use, uh, Rogers Anderson Park because of the wide open spaces. You know, I think that, uh, when we had, uh, youth soccer going, had a real strong youth soccer program going for a long time, uh, that was, uh, one of the main programs being played at that park. And I think, you know, when you look at park space, you could look at costs as one, uh, one mode of of d- determining what you want to do, but I think it has to, I think the other, uh, part of the equation is what type of programming do you want to offer? And, uh, you know, and that's totally a council decision. Uh, I I will say that Rogers Anderson is is not used as as much as the other two parks, possibly because of, uh, you know, it's so large, uh, you know, it's hard to park, uh, there's a number of reasons, but I think it really depends on what type of programming that we want to offer in the future.
Yeah, the park community is pretty limited. What about, um, green space? Um, you know, I I know it was it was said that it's it's not, um, mandatory that you have green space, but communities are known for, um, they, there is a, um, unnecessary survey, maybe it's the index of, um, open space, um, how much open space is not necessarily required, but recommended, um, um, for a city based on size. Wondering will that have any, um, effect on our open, being our open space, quote unquote, requirement if we relinquish any of the park?
Well, the, uh, this is Mike Estes, Director of Community Services again. Uh, well, as I think Mr. Kearney mentioned, uh, uh, some time ago, that, uh, the county has a recommendation, the county recommendation is one acre per every one thousand residents, which would, uh, you know, I don't want to say require, which suggests that the city of Longdale could have up to thirty-three acres. And they also count that as city-owned park space as well and not necessarily, uh, joint use, uh, facilities as well. So, you know, I I believe city-owned, uh, were about five to six acres, uh, you know, we're well over that thirty-three with all three parks and the city parks, uh, but as Mr. Kearney mentioned, it's just a suggestion, uh, you know, they have, they have reported, the county's reported that, uh, you know, the communities with lower park space below, uh, one acre per thousand residents seem to have a higher, uh, higher tendency to, uh, to have more of a tendency to have higher obesity rates and things like that. But it's just a county recommendation. It's 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 more or less, uh, a benchmark to shoot for as you're developing parks and, uh, looking to add recreational space to any city. So, uh, yeah, it's a county recommendation and and, uh, you know, we're r- really close with all three parks, uh, as we are right now. But once again, it's just a county recommendation. I think it, more importantly, it's it's what the the city, in terms of programming, to provide the programming they want to do.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so that's my perspective on on the park, uh. Short, we should continue, uh, with the, um, park program, um. I'm going into this, um, fiscal year, um, if possible, um, entertain the, uh, the thought of giving up Anderson Park and retaining the other two parks if that will save us cost.
Robert, this is Pat, this is Pat.
Yes.
So you're saying give up Roger Anderson this year and go with the other two parks you're recommending this year?
Well, if we can, yeah, I'm I'm, this year, this fiscal year, we can program, um, fund, say, um, Jane Addams.
And William Green.
Jane Addams and William Green. Um, I'm definitely in favor of that. If someone can show, if we can show that we definitely need, um, Anderson Park, then of course we we should fund Anderson Park as well, but I wouldn't want to just fund Anderson Park just to, just to have. Now, if, let's say for instance, if they say, well, it it's, um, a three package deal, you you can't subdivide the parks, then of course we would want, you know, our three part. But if they're willing to lease to us, um, William Green and James Addams, I don't see anything wrong with that, but I still don't see the benefit from Anderson Park. And the, um, the other uses. So, generally, Anderson Parks are usually like private uses that they can, they can get from, uh, the school district, correct?
So what you're saying, well, do a one-year contract for Green and Addams, give back Roger Anderson, correct?
I wouldn't mind giving back Roger Anderson, unless someone else have any.
You know, I concur with you because nobody uses that park. There's a big tree and a playground. That's all there is there, and a track and Rogers. And I know the.
I'm open to giving up Anderson Park. I would like to see what the other council members, uh,
Oh, yeah.
feel about it, but I'd be okay giving up Rogers, um,
Okay.
Roger Anderson and retaining Green and, uh, Jane Addams. So what is what is the field of, uh, the council?
Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Councilmember Cuevas. Um, I'll, if if we do it for one year, I'll, I'm okay with that as long as we continue open talks with the, um, with the school district and possibly get all parks back and get some programs to Roger, uh, Roger Anderson, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Yes, I would agree with that. If we decide, yes, let's have a program that's that would be, uh, more fitting at Roger Anderson, then it would make sense. Like if we were going to do a stock of programs, then okay, that would make sense. Need the large field or what have you. Uh, so I would definitely agree with that.
And Mr. Mayor, do we know approximately how much we would be saving if we, um, give, uh, Roger Anderson back? Is there?
No, Mike Estes, you may know, may have an idea.
Mayor, this is Pat. I have the breakdown of our last meeting.
You, oh, you had, you guys have it, okay.
Oh, I have to do it. Would be saving overall, given Roger Anderson back, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. So i- if you do that, minus that from what the staff report says of a hundred and forty-seven dollars, that's why I say this, this report is incomplete and has errors everywhere. But anyway.
Well, whatever the final numbers is, we know.
Mr. Mayor, if if I might just, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I might clarify, um, the the numbers in the staff report contrary to what, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Kearney says that that they are correct. Um, this is, it's a number that's included in the preliminary budget as of now. Um, the cost for the three parks for the contractor, for the utilities is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. Um, the staff, um, time for that would be approximately fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars. That's where the one hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty number comes from. Again, that is, uh, in the budget and the reason why, um, the, uh, not the the number for staff time is is as low as it is is because we, um, are not proposing to staff the parks like we've done in previous years, which comes at a much more substantial cost. Uh, we're looking at, um, providing, um, just the staffing that we need, the the minimal staffing that we need to ensure that the parks are monitored, um, which is our responsibility, uh, with the parks. So, um, um, yeah, the one forty-seven thousand, four twenty is correct. Um, if we were to eliminate Rogers Anderson Park, um, uh, we, I I would have to, um, you know, look at the numbers further, but, um, we'd have to see how much staff time would be dedicated to that part. Uh, but it would be, uh, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars for the contractor, I'm I'm sorry, yes, for the contractor as well as the utilities. And then we would have to figure out how much staff time would would be devoted to that part. If you look at fifteen thousand, six hundred as the total cost for staff, if, you know, you divided that in three, roughly five thousand dollars added to the Rogers Anderson amount would take you to roughly, uh, uh, sixty-three thousand dollars for, um, the cost of the of the parks for the city. Roughly.
Okay, so, so how much are you saying that we would save if we did relinquish for that, um, year, um, Anderson Park?
Roughly, uh, sixty-three thousand dollars.
So it's bringing down to seventy-seven, seven, around seventy-seven, seventy-eight thousand dollars for two parks. Plus staff time if we decide to open them, correct, Kevin?
Uh, yes, so it would be the one forty-seven, four twenty minus about sixty-five thousand, uh, sixty-three thousand, excuse me.
So I've I've heard from, um, Cuevas and, um, and Kearney on relinquishing, uh, Anderson Park. Going to ask, um, Councilman Hoffman-Gorman.
I still, thank you, Robert. I still feel the same as what I originally stated. I think that this is, um, uh, the timing of all this, I think, is not good because we know the school district is in the middle of their budget too, and to have this thrown at them, I don't think that that's really fair for, uh, the other board that is our partners in the city. On top of it, um, I do believe that there are ways to include the school district on picking up some of the funds, but I I'm not necessarily sold that by giving back one park this year, it's going to make a heck of a lot of difference. I would say move forward all three parks this year while the subcommittee or even if not the subcommittee, and Greg, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Maybe both boards need to sit down, complete boards and have a conversation about this all together instead of just two of us representing. I don't know, I I'm just throwing that out there, but that's my feeling is I I don't think that we ought to be cutting off Rogers Anderson this year. We should keep all three, um, parks in this, and I think that we've got to remember that that school board, that's the little sister to our big sister board and, um, I hate to see this occur. I know financially, long-term, Kat, we can't keep doing this, but I think there's other ways to do this.
Well, but, uh, Ron, I've been on this committee. Well, your dad appointed me way back when, and we've been with the school district and every year they say they have no money, every year. And I've been, this is my eleventh year on the book, on the school, on the city council. And, you know, I I don't understand where their money is at. But anyway, that's neither here or there.
I understand.
And also we have to remember, um, that our notice to the school district is is not, um, um, suddenly, we actually had to get a, give a year notice, um, which we have, given a year notice that that we will, we're entertaining, um, changes, a termination or changes of some sort that's pursuant to our contract. So it is not as if this would be a total, I mean, it may not, it may be a shock to them, but it's not, it wouldn't be a surprise that we are discussing whether relinquish all the parks or portion.
Correct. Cause they got, they received notice last year and they wait till, I can't remember if it's February, March this year to start negotiating on it.
I just would hate for us to pay for, it's not like we can't, you know, come back, you know, in two years or whatever, um, if we have a real need for Anderson Park, uh, that it's still going to be there. I'm s- I'm s- and I'm sure the opportunity is still, so at this point, it seems like we're spending fifty thousand dollars just to have a park there just to have another park. And our budget is tight. I mean, we're going to sound like we're going to be in a better position than we this year than we were last year. But we are still behind in terms of making up progress that we kind of at a standstill and have a and sixty thousand dollar park that we're not using. But that could go into bringing back the PD, um, personnel on weekends, things of that nature. Kind of hard for me to do that, you know, if we were having a robust program, um, at the park, it would be an easier sale. But notwithstanding, um, COVID, because I, obviously we did reduce our our park program, um, but even before COVID, we didn't have ro- a robust program at Anderson.
No, it didn't.
By knowledge, we've never had a robust program at Anderson. I've been there only twice, I think, to city events. And I've been in the city about twenty-seven years. Another maybe handful of times with a private event. That city had nothing to do with at all. City didn't participate at all. I was just invited, uh, to go to. So it would be a little hard for me to to say, yeah, let's spend sixty thousand dollars on a park and then drive around on the weekend, have graffiti because we can't afford to have the, um, person or there was some personnel that was cut in, uh, municipal service, uh, code enforcement, particularly on the weekend. And that we should be bringing back hopefully, April, April. That's my only concern. Let's hear from Bernadette if she want to, uh,
I thought you forgot about me. Um, so I originally, when this, as I mentioned before, when this was brought forward, I think I kind of grappled with the, my hesitation was relinquishing them because my thought is even though we don't maybe do city events or maybe we don't use them as much, I think that there is use out of those parks. There is some public benefit to having the parks and maintaining them and quite frankly, I I I do believe that the ci- the the, uh, the schools are bleeding for money from from what I gather, just going on, reading news and all that. I I don't think they're in a position to really take this on, um, just yet, n- not so drastically at least. So I I think I kind of understand just from what's going on with with things in general, why they'd be hurting for money, um, whatever the reasons are for. And so I I don't think I was completely sold originally. I think we sent the letter out kind of, you know, that they've called our bluff, you know, and saying, you know, we really don't have money. So I mean, I I'm okay with continuing the the agreement that we have in place. I think it's going to be easier to continue to have it in our budget and always allocate for it than it will be to cut it out of our budget and then bring it back subsequently, because I don't think that's going to happen. I think once we cut it, it's it's going to be a done deal. So I'm okay with continuing the agreement that we have and continuing the conversations with the school board and seeing if there's some items that they can take on, um, and kind of repairing that relationship. and kind of repairing that relationship rather than just cut and dry. So those those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Didn't forget about you. Yeah, I do take your take your point there, moving it from the budget. This case not be full value. Thousand dollars moving from the budget. Sometimes it is harder to take that in the budget. But obviously, that's, obviously, if that's the council. What it's down to me all tonight, that we instill, reinstalled, as you said, the updated a budget on crossing guard item. Didn't necessarily need need the service as much as we needed before pandemic. Will need.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt you again, but you're you're cutting in and out again.
Yeah, so we will be moving it from the budget, but we can always restate it in the budget if we if we desire and determine that we have a need, a need for the park. I am okay with, like I said, since these, how long does this agreement, is this a year agreement?
Each of the agreements were for twenty-five years.
So you said the next time we'll be able to visit this will be in twenty-five years?
No, for, actually, for all three parks, well, let me just, what's what I put in the report is for Adams and Green Parks, that agree, those two agreements expire January two thousand twenty-six. And for Rogers Anderson Park, that agreement expires November two thousand twenty-six. So all of them will be in two thousand twenty-six, but just in different months.
And and Mr. Mayor, this is Greg Murphy. That's without the current termination, which terminates all three agreements as of July first of this year. So a- as we've sort of talked it through, the city could withdraw its termination, the termination that you adopted last year, or you could allow the terminations to go through and then enter into new shorter term agreements. As I mentioned, you know, potentially one year to allow for more negotiation time while you continue to consider this and think about what is best for the city.
I would definitely suggest that we enter into new agreements that will reduce the time of twenty-five years. If we had an agreement where we, what the agreements were only, let's say, a short term, you know, three years or what have you, I could see having Anderson in there because we're not locked in for twenty-five years. Include Anderson in that short term, short term lease. Obviously, making sure that we actually have program in a program out of Anderson or either making sure that we have some type of program that we at least leasing it so that private parties can have programs there as opposed to just sitting there. But then that three years, five years, or what have you, would then give us an opportunity to come back to the city, meet to the to the school district, see the school district will be able to to join us in the maintenance sometime, some type of agreement or to reassess to see after three, five years, whatever happens to be, do we still need Anderson Park? Or any of the other parks for that matter. So if you're saying, Mr. City Attorney, that we could, we could allow the agreement to terminate, which we've already given notice a year ago, and then enter into three, I guess there would be three, or an agreement that would encompass the three parts for a shorter duration, I would be open to that. If you're talking about durations like three, five years, not durations like ten, fifteen years.
Sir, we can do, we can certainly offer that. Your termination letter did say that the city is amenable to negotiating a new agreement to start as of July first of this year. And we take whatever direction the council gives and propose a continuing or a new agreement to the school district. I'm I'm all ears as to what you would like that to include. I will take whatever direction you give, sir.
Because let me make sure I understand, so whatever we adopt, let's say, we have the termination agreement. So termination agreement, terminate, that means we're no longer using the park as of as of today, if we do nothing, right?
That is correct, sir. As of July one, the city is no longer connected to the three facilities.
Okay, so we can't say, yeah, we we would like to enter to some type of agreement with you that would also include a reduction in the lease year.
So, Rob, this is bad. So Greg, we can let these parks go defunct, negotiate for the two parks until we don't Roger Anderson, and we can go for a one-year deal, correct?
Yes, sir, that is, that is correct. We can, if the council's direction is to do that, I would certainly work with staff. We put together an agreement on very similar terms to what you had in the past. But with an agreement of of one year, or if, as the mayor said, if if your proposal is three years, we put that together, we get that over to them so that we could come to some agreement before July one. And it's whatever the five of you tell me is what I will do.
Okay, Robert, we can do that one year. And the school district can still open the park, Rhonda. They have a key, they can open the park, kids can play in there. Just like the gym. I remember, Robert, you remember, when we had a five-year or ten-year agreement? And then lately, it's one or two years now. Michael, maybe you, Michael, that's it, you can, what is it, a one-year or two-year for the gym now?
Yes, Councilman Kearney, there is no contract for the gym right now. The the gym was an original fifteen-year contract developed in two thousand and expired in two thousand fifteen. And at that time, the administration of the school district did not want a follow-up contract. They didn't want an extension or a new agreement. So we have been basically using the facility on a facility reservation basis and paying them annually.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilwoman Cuevas. If we could do a one-year contract or maybe a two, I say we do all three parks and then continue to work with the school as long as we don't get tied in ten, fifteen years.
Yeah, I was going to say that too, Councilwoman, that it it makes sense to have a two, three-year agreement with all three parks, and where we can really fully analyze, see if we can bring programs to Anderson Park. I'd rather have it, have Anderson Park, if not, just don't want to pay for it if we're not using it.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with that.
Okay, so it sounds like we can, we can and that's that's it from Bernadette, you want to add anything, Bernadette?
Heard it.
I'm I'm sorry, you cut off.
Oh, all third, what was just what the two other ladies said.
Yes, ma'am. You're funny, okay. So it sounds like we have a consensus that we'll we'll let the current agreement lapse as already give the termination notice. We will enter into a new agreement with the, you know, school district that will allow us to use all three parks with a duration, would not exceed like three years? Two. Okay, two.
I would say, Mr. Mayor, I would say two years with continued communication with the school district to see if.
Yes, with the with the idea, with the intent of constantly communicating with the school districts on some of these other issues in terms of like maintenance. Sound like we have a consensus. Let me ask you, Mr. City Attorney, do we need to finalize this? Do we want us to do a vote on this, or how how would you see that?
I I I always prefer, sir, just because we're remote and the governor's orders have have asked for it. Otherwise, if we were all in the meeting room together, I could see everyone's face and I could be sure that we we had consensus. But I I would like a vote, and I think the motion would be to direct staff to negotiate a two-year contract for all three parks to commence on July.
I lost the communication.
Okay, you bet. Go go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. The motion would be to direct staff to negotiate a two-year contract for all three parks and that would commence on July first of this year and to further direct staff to continue negotiation for district participation in the maintenance of the parks and investigation of city programming of Anderson Park. And I think if someone could make that motion, I would be much more comfortable, sir. Thank you.
Could be the motion, can anyone, I can take a motion.
This is Councilmember Cuevas, a motion to.
Councilmember Cuevas has made said motion.
Also, gonna.
Taken by Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman, any question on the motion? See, now I'm going to ask the.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, it's Kevin Chung. Just a point of clarification. So with this two-year agreement, would would the council like this for one agreement for all three parks? Or separate agreements for each park?
It's two or three.
One, one agreement for all three?
No, I think it should be separate, Robert.
Why, why?
If you want to give back Roger Anderson, you can and keep the other two.
Well, I mean, I don't think it really matters because that can be stipulated in the in the contract either way. I mean, maybe the city attorney knows if there's any difference.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry for bringing that up, but in in going through the older reports and documents, at one point, that was something that the council considered, but I don't think there was any action taken on that. So I just wanted.
I think that's fine to have three, three contracts, three separate contracts, not exceed two years. All three of them, two years each.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask the city.
Okay, and so this is for item number nine. Mayor Protem Kearney.
I bet that, no.
Councilmember Suarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, back to my end here. We're now at item ten. This is item ten, items from the council. Let's hear from Councilwoman Cuevas.
Sorry about that.
No, you forgot, the city manager report.
Let's have the.
It does, the city manager report. Let's have the city manager's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It it didn't matter to me. If you wanted to go first, that would have been fine. I I just had a couple items to report on. First, I I just wanted to revise a statement I made at the last city council meeting regarding the county's mobile vaccination clinic that was planned for for Lawndale on May twenty-first and June fourteenth. Those plans have changed, and we just heard from the county today that they are still planning to come to Lawndale. There, I know there was some confusion with that, but we we did get clarification today. They are still planning to come to Lawndale on June eleventh, and they will be providing the Johnson and Johnson vaccination. And we will be getting information out to the community so that the community can make appointments and arrangements to get their vaccines if they need it again on June eleventh. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then I also wanted to let the community know again about the city's illegal fireworks suppression plan. I I just wanted to make sure that everyone in the community understood that the city is taking a pretty hard stance with regard to the possession and use of illegal fireworks. And for clarification, illegal fireworks are those fireworks that explode loudly, sort of like a firecracker or, you know, some other fireworks that's even more powerful than that. Illegal fireworks are also those that shoot up high into the sky and explode. So those are illegal fireworks that we will be looking for and then finding, you know, those in the community that use those fireworks. The only fireworks that are allowed in Lawndale are what's known as safe and sane fireworks. And of course, those are the fireworks that are sold at approved fireworks booths that will be throughout the community. So I just wanted to make sure that there, that the community understood that there is a distinction between the different types of fireworks and that the city will be cracking down on illegal fireworks. So moving forward, if residents are found to have been using illegal fireworks, there will be fines of one thousand dollars for the first violation, two thousand dollars for the second violation, and then two thousand dollars for all subsequent violations within a five-year period. So, you know, before, our deputies were looking for those violators actually lighting the fireworks in order to cite them. However, this year, we're doing something different. And if deputies can can determine that fireworks are coming from a specific property, even though they don't actually see the fireworks being lit, we will still cite residents on on that basis. So I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. We are getting this information out to the public. We've started that. We're doing that in a number of ways, including sending a mailer to all addresses in Lawndale explaining what I've just mentioned about illegal fireworks. We will putting that information up on our social media, on our website, on the cable TV channel. We have banners up in the community. We will be putting up message trailer boards throughout the community. And so we are doing all that we can to make sure that this information gets out there so that there aren't any surprises if people choose to use illegal fireworks and then are cited. So if there's any questions regarding this, the community can also always contact the city, contact the Municipal Services Department specifically. And if they are concerned about illegal fireworks, they can also contact the Sheriff's Department. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, manager. Wouldn't want to miss all that. All right, let's move on to item ten. Items from council members.
Okay, Saturday the eighth, I attended Little League's opening day. There was no ceremony this year, just your standard games. A lot of parents were in attendance at Jane Addams. On five twelve, I was on a conference call with the League of California Cities and Senator Bradford, and we discussed Bill SB two, which Senator Bradford wrote. And this bill talks about the decertification of peace officers that he is presenting to the assembly for voting. Very interesting, they're still in talks with several people, but it'll, we'll know more about it later on. I also attended the League of California City. I also attended the League of California City Legislation Action webinar on, uh, May twelfth and thirteenth, and, um, they also discussed the, um, SB one-three-eight-three, the Organic Waste Reduction, uh, Regulation Program that needs to be in place by January of twenty-twenty-second. And I don't know, are we, I don't know who to ask, but are we working on that, uh, regulation or that program?
Yes, Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Cuevas, uh, that is something that we are very, very aware of, and we are working on that. Um, we, um, have a, um, uh, waste consultant that, uh, we are also working with. So, uh, yes, we do know of all of the various ordinances that have to be passed, and, um, we will, um, uh, make sure that those come to the council before, um, the end of the year. So, um, Julian, would you like to add anything to that?
Uh, no, um, as, um, as, uh, Kevin said, we are working on it. We actually met with the city attorney a couple of weeks ago to coordinate that, and, um, and we are trying to coordinate with other, the departments to, to come up with the, uh, proper ordinance for our city.
Thank you.
Information on that, please, uh, please contact me directly. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, madam. That's her from Councilwoman Suarez.
Um, I'm not as good as remembering dates, but I know I did attend the Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly. Um, there was some bylaw changes, um, just to be more inclusive and allow more members to, to sit uh, as representatives. And, and then I did want to mention that, um, I enjoyed seeing the banner for, you know, our, our banner, um, for illegal fireworks, which stated, "You light it, you cite it." So whoever came up with that, uh, it was, it was very humorous to me, but I, I liked it. So with that, I'll pass it along.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as attending, uh, events, I have not in the last two weeks attended an event, but I do have a couple of comments that I would like to share. The first one being, I would like to say thank you to Julian, to, um, Jack and everybody from, um, that department from Public Works. So he, I have been very nervous about the paving in my neighborhood, and I've had a lot of residents with, that, that had concerns as well. And I just want to commend that department and Kevin. Um, you held our hands over here beautifully, and you got us through. I, I, I still have questions and, and things still coming in, but I, I, I appreciate your leadership on that. That has taken a lot of my time in the last two weeks is the resurfacing of the streets. Furthermore, I also want, I have spent a lot of time on the phone with residents regarding the illegal fireworks. And one of the things that surprised everyone, and we can't say enough, is that we are going to have unmarked cars, and our officers don't need to see the ignition of that firework. And the best thing that that resident can do that is close by and aggravated is to give us a description, give us an address, get us a video, get us whatever you can get to provide, and call City Hall and, and give them that information. Call the sheriff and give them that information. And if that doesn't work, you've got a five-member city council. Pick up the phone and call one of us, and we'll be more than happy to intercede. I think I say that on behalf of all of us on, on city council. Um, Kevin, I do have a question. Weren't we supposed to be putting out a letter to the property owners of the residents um, regarding fireworks as well? And what date are those, that letter going to go out?
We did, um, send out, uh, an email, well, several email blasts to, um, let me better answer your question. Uh, no, we did not do that specifically to, uh, property owners. Um, it is something we still can do. I think I understand what you're getting at. Um, sending letters to property owners, um, especially the ones that may not, uh, be living, um, at those locations. Is that, is that right?
I think every property owner in the city needs to have a letter written that regardless of it's them living on the property or a tenant. Um, if it's a tenant that is blowing off these illegals, by golly, that property owner needs to know about it, that the city of Lawndale isn't very happy with this. And that's, again, part of, part of the, the fight in this, this new ordinance.
Right.
We've got to call in that property owner regardless if they're living there or not.
Tell you what, um, Councilmember Hoffman Gorman, uh, let me, let me look into that, and, um, you know, obviously there, there, there will be a little bit of a cost to doing that. Um, I think we're, in, in terms of our thirty thousand dollar budget, we are looking, we're, we're pretty much at the limit. But I, I, I understand your, your thoughts on that. Let me see if, if we can do that, and, uh, I'll, I'll let the council know.
Okay, great. I believe that was it.
Okay, thank you, madam. Councilwoman, thank you, um, let's listen, let's, let's hear from, uh, Councilmember Protem, this is, hey.
Okay, thanks, Robert. I attended the California Contract Cities Association, sworn in for Mark Wardick as a president. Uh, Kevin and I attended by Zoom the Lobby Trust Oversight Committee. And also attended, um, by, by the SoCal and One Child Helping Hand giveaway, all our entorns. With that, that's it. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Um, the only item I have. I had a meeting with, um, our representative from, um, Southern California Edison. Um, just a, a, a check-in. It was supposed to be, um, scheduled as a, actually as a meeting greet. We're getting a new representative, um, had a few, so we new representative, I can't, uh, recall the lady's name, um, but she, um, took ill, I guess at the last, um, estimate, fortunately, but she wasn't able to attend. But I did get a briefing from, um, our current, um, Edison representative, um, to prize us of our new representative, who we represent in this area, our city. So that, uh, be in good, good hands, and so that, uh, see our good relationships with, um, California Edison. Um, I am proud to report that the, um, outgoing representative has reported that Edison and the city have a great, um, relationship, and it has improved, um, much, um, in, uh, past. For whatever reason, they were, sort of, pick up in the relationship, um, for whatever reason. But he's very happy with our relationship. That was. Also want to say that I did observe also the, the fireworks banner. Appreciate, um, Public Works for putting up a banner, um, reminding people of, um, legal use of fireworks, illegal fireworks will not be, you know, sorry. I want to reiterate what the, um, Councilwoman, um, Hoffman Gorman, um, said about the letters to property owners. It was my understanding that we were asking that, that we directed the staff to send letters to property owners, not just, um, the, uh, knowing that, um, our city have a, a, a great, um, portion of our properties that actually rentals, and most of land, um, owners do not actually live in the city. And how they could be saddled with, um, fines, it would be obviously heaven's tares for them to know that program of, um, tolerance. So, um, I know there might be a cost associated with sending out the letters, but seeing that we had got these letters that went out, and that we would figure out where we're gonna get the money. And with that, that's all I have on the, there is a council. Do have a closed session tonight. This is a closed session conference with the labor negotiator. With that in mind, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give us the provision for which we will go under closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the city council will now conduct a closed session per Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six with the city's labor negotiators, uh, regarding negotiations with the represented employees as set forth more fully in the printed agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, we're ready to go.
Yes, we have a closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the city council was briefed on the current status of labor negotiations. No reportable action was taken this, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. It is now nine-thirty-nine. We have completed our agenda for the evening. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council would be held at six-thirty PM on Monday, June the seventh. This meeting is hereby adjourned.